Okay, let's call the meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. We're going to read the opening statement per the new arrangement, well, the new, the last year arrangement we have with both virtual and in-person. So we'll walk through the proceedings and how we're going to conduct the hearing this evening before we get started so everyone's on the same page. Good evening, this is the regularly scheduled July 28th meeting of the Geneva Planning and Zoning Commission. I am Scott Stocking, the chairman of the commission. For tonight, for the benefit of those in the audience, I am joined by our public hearing transcriber, Commissioner John Mead, Commissioner Tim Moran, Commissioner Rebecca Holman, Commissioner Mike Slifka, Commissioner Anna Muschel, and our new recording secretary, Vanessa Kuehl. Welcome. Assistant Planner Mike Busing and City Planner Chayton Tru. Evans is not going to be attending this evening's meeting, Commissioner Evans. Virtual attendees may watch or participate in a live stream meeting by accessing the link provided in the meeting agenda found on the city's website at www.geneva-il.us. For more information about meeting procedures or providing public comment, please see notice regarding meeting and public comment rule modification, a link to which is provided on the agenda for the meeting this evening. This evening, the commission will host a public hearing regarding Agenda 5A. As chairman of tonight's meeting, I will guide the public and the applicant and the commission through the public hearing process, which is outlined in the back of the meeting agenda. Please see this page for further detail. The commission will open the public hearing, and the applicant will have an opening statement and brief overview of their request. Commission members will have first opportunity to ask questions and make comments. This will then be followed by public comment and testimony regarding the requests. Audience members will be called on, virtually or in person, and given an opportunity to comment. We ask that you state your name and address when it is your turn to speak. If your comment has already been made, or your question has already been asked, it is not necessary to repeat it. Remind members of the public to refrain from veering off-topic and direct comments that are relevant to the requests being considered. Following public testimony, the applicant will have an opportunity to provide a closing statement and comprehensively answer questions or respond to any of the comments made from members of the public. Additional questions or comments may be stated by the commission, but public comment will not be reopened. The public hearing may then be closed, followed by the commission's liberation on separate requests. Any person speaking during the public hearing agreed to understand that anything they say will be considered sworn testimony and affirm to tell the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Commissioners, please state your name prior to speaking and prior to providing a roll call vote to better assist our record keepers, for example, Stocking, yea, nay, or abstain. Okay? So that's how we're going to proceed this evening. Any questions? If not, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Evans. Holman.
Holman here.
Mattaskil.
Mattaskil here.
Mead.
Mead here.
Moran.
Moran here.
Slifka.
Slifka here.
Chairman Stocking.
Stocking here. Okay, next item is approval of the agenda for this evening's meeting. Do we have a motion?
So moved, Moran.
Seconded, Slifka.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next item is approval of the minutes of our last meeting, which was July 14th, 2022. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve the minutes for the July 14th meeting.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, and then we'll move on to our public hearing, item 5A. It's for 1258 Meadows Road driveway variation. Request for a variation from Section 11-11C-3 access control standards for streets to allow more than two driveway entrances and a variation from Section 11-5B-4 lot and area requirements to increase the allowable lot coverage from 35% to 38.13%. Location again is 1258 Meadows Road, and the applicant is Jonathan and Amber Hilton? Is that how you pronounce the last name?
Hilton.
Hilton, as in, okay. Just, I should have just substituted the "I" for the "Y." That's it. Okay, thank you for that, and Chayton, do you have items for the record?
Yes, I do, Chair. So the contents of this file includes an application for two variations for the driveways.
Take your mic.
The contents of this file include an application for two variations related to driveway regarding access control standards for streets and lot coverage. The property, for the property located at 1258 Meadows Road dated July 11th, 2022, and filed by Jonathan and Amber Hilton. This application includes the following items: project narrative, response to variation standards, existing and proposed plot of survey, proposed site plan, supporting photos, neighborhood support signatures, list of property owners within 500 feet of the subject property, affidavit attesting to the accuracy of the list of property owners within 500 feet of the subject property. The contents of this file also includes a copy of the letter to all property owners within 500 feet providing notice of the application being filed, a certificate of publication from the Daily Herald for the legal notice that was published on July 13th, 2022 for tonight's public hearing, a copy of the public hearing notice mailed to all property owners within 500 feet, and a staff report from the Community Development Department to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated July 28th, 2022.
All right, thank you very much. So at this time, I'll swear everybody in is going to provide testimony. Please rise, raise your right hand if you're going to give testimony at this meeting. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we're looking to hear from you. Yep, come forward. I think you have your mic on, that's the big thing.
It should be on.
It's on?
Yeah.
Okay. So thank you, everybody, for allowing us to be on the agenda tonight. We decided to come in to request this variation related to sort of the unique situation that we have with our yard. So as, I'm sure many of you are familiar with where we are in Meadows Road. One, our particular roadway has no curbs. Two, where we are, we have, I'm not quite certain what to call it, but it is a private road, I believe, that comes off of Meadows Road that gives access to our driveway. That private road is not necessary for us, but it is necessary for neighbors that are across that private roadway. That's the only access point that they have. So in this unique circumstance, what we found is, well, I'll start with our letter of intent. Everybody has the package, but I figure I'll just go off of the letter of intent that I wrote. One, during the day, through delivery vehicles, lawn maintenance, every other car that's going through, it's quite congested on Meadows Road. There's an awful lot of pedestrian traffic. We've seen a couple near misses with kids in the neighborhood while cars are driving around, parked cars that are out on Meadows Road. And so one of the items that is important to us is minimizing that congestion on Meadows Road. If we did have this, what we're asking for is a semicircle driveway in the front of our house for our guests to at least do their part in staying off of Meadows Road. Many cases, when we have people to our house, they really don't know how to access our driveway. If you're not familiar with the area, you would look and say, well, where's the driveway? Here's the front of the house. And so we want to make sure that we're at least doing our part in ensuring pedestrian safety. We know the neighbors, we see an awful lot of people walking around through COVID. I was working from my house, and I was surprised to see how much traffic was in front on Meadows Road. So this, we think, would help from a pedestrian safety standpoint in front of the house. But we do have, I believe it's called a practical difficulty, in the front of our house because people believe that you can just pull in on the grass. And so that grass is subject to pretty frequent repair. It's, I don't know how else to say it, but it's pretty annoying having to have our landscaper continually work on the grass that's adjacent to Meadows Road, because again, there is no curb. And so when people pull up, whether it's raining, snowing, or anything else, they just pull right into the grass. And we've had to, in the five years that we've been there, repair that grass and constantly do things with that grass in the front of the house. So the lawn maintenance, lawn repair that we've had up front is what we see as a practical difficulty. Practical use, I think, is also an important piece. Again, for those of you familiar with where we are, we have kind of a big unused front yard. I think having this half-circle driveway would allow us to at least have a practical use so that visitors, and we're more thinking of our parents, as our parents are getting older, we currently have stone steps that take you from the driveway to the front of our house. Little bit of a walk and uneven surface that we have right now, I think it'd be much more of a practical use to allow our guests to pull into the front of the house in the semicircle drive and then just walk into the front door. To us, it seems like a more of a reasonable use to our front yard. Currently, we have no reasonable use to our front yard. So this would allow us to have a reasonable use and alleviate the practical difficulty of continuing to have to do lawn repair at that front section. So that covers kind of the letter of intent. You know, in terms of exhibits, you know, in regards to the two requests, obviously the second request is directly related to the first. So if we can have the additional access point, again, Dryden Road is considered our access point, even though we don't necessarily need that as our access point, but it's considered our access point. So that's where this request for variation is coming from. Technically, we will have three access points to our house because of the semicircle would have two. And we did look at other alternatives. I must say that the city has been, employees of the city have been very helpful in looking at various options that we did consider, but it would involve us removing trees, and we were not very fond of having to remove trees to just have sort of a one-way in and then access to Dryden Road. We prefer to keep the trees that we have in our front yard, so we don't want to, you know, the other options didn't appear to make as much sense that we did consider. But again, the help that we've had from city employees has been great. This is, processes are processes, but going blind at this and never having done it, city employees and city staff has done a great job to help get us to this point. So I do want to make sure I say thank you to everybody in the office, Chayton, you too. So beyond that, you know, I know that there are some important items to cover in regards to sort of our take on why we think it makes sense and it's feasible for us to have this. Reasonable return, which, you know, reasonable return is one of the items that we must cover. And I think in prior instances, reasonable return has also been looked at as reasonable use. And so we've kind of, you know, looking at this and sort of the character of our neighborhood, I think character of our neighborhood really does fit in with the proposed plan that we have for a half-circle drive. We were surprised to find that there were 19 other homes in our immediate neighborhood that have half-circle drives up front, and there were also two homes within 500 feet that have three access points to their house, one of which does have curbs, so there are three curb cuts, the other does not have curbs. But this curb issue, I really wish, that's a separate issue. So anyways, I think that covers a good portion of the actual application and the reasons, again, reasonable use, but as far as reasonable return goes, I also believe that having an additional aesthetic and a real use of our front yard, right now, our front yard is just kind of dead space. This would actually provide a reasonable use, and I do believe it would provide a reasonable yield, a reasonable return to us as the homeowner there. And it very much does fit the character of our neighborhood, which is important to us, as I know it's important to you guys. So I'm trying to think now, going through, covered much, I think of our Exhibit B, reasonable return, I've talked about, unique hardship or practical difficulty, character of the area, and minimum variation. We were a little bit surprised, unfortunately, our landscape design firm had miscalculated. We had thought that we would be able to get in with just one variation request. Came as a little bit of a surprise to us that we had to have that second variation request on there, but it has to do with the width of the driveway. And so while I mentioned that these two requests are directly related, if the width of the driveway is too narrow because we can't have, because of impervious lot coverage, which is really where it's coming from and having this half-circle, ultimately, I'm here because of a practical difficulty of repairing grass on the front of Meadows Road, the grass adjacent to Meadows Road. I'd be doing the same thing inside of our yard if we can't get a wide enough turn radius for vehicles on the inside. So the additional lot coverage, as I mentioned, was directly related, but we want to make sure that we have a sufficient enough turn radius for those, if we are able to have this driveway, for those that are using the driveway, that they can actually turn without driving on our yard as they're turning in and out of the yard. So that, most of the questions related to the second request are basically directly related to the answers to the exhibit that you guys have in front of you for the first request. Okay, all right. Any questions from the commissioners? Yes, John?
Just a couple that come to mind. Driveways, the circular driveway starts at 12 feet wide, and then after it turns, it gets 15 feet. So that will do a couple things. It'll allow your yard to be preserved, it'll, one, it also allow, two, a vehicle to pass another vehicle. If you have five guests over and somebody wants to leave, you don't, four people don't have to move their cars so they can go home or something?
Yeah, so thank you for the question. Yes, that actually is part of the reason why it was wider there, so we had additional square footage, impervious square footage related to that, so that in the event that their cars were jammed up there, we wouldn't have to have everybody drive around. It was more of, if we are going to ask, let's make sure that we do it the right way if we're going to do it, and that was the very reason as to why it gets wider.
I looked at, and I've been over there a couple times, and I've pulled into the private road, Dryden. I thought initially, well, couldn't they just live with the front driveway? But your garage is on the side of the house, you, it's, you don't have to have that as your access point if you're building a house greenfield, but the way your house is set up, you have to have Dryden. So your request, you can't abandon the third because you need to be able to pull in your garage.
We had looked at, under a worst-case scenario, sort of a U-shaped driveway, but again, there's no way for us to sufficiently block off, if Dryden Road, if the intersection of Dryden Road and Meadows Road is considered the access point, we couldn't cut off that access point at the intersection of Dryden and Meadows. For our driveway, if we were to grass over the end of our driveway where the concrete stops, if you've been over to the house, we could have a U-shaped scenario. We'd have to remove a tree, but we'd have the same semicircle and a U coming back to the main.
You mean accessing the garage from the side?
From Meadows?
Yeah. And then doing a right turn into?
So it would be a, we'd be reversing into the driveway. That would be the worst-case scenario for us to go that way.
Sure, sure.
And it just seemed impractical, right? I mean, the notion of it seems very difficult. So yes, the driveway, if you're, you know, again, somebody that's familiar with the area, I think it's much easier to have them come over and know, I'll turn in to get there. But for other guests, they end up parking in the front on my grass, and it starts me being a little crabby right away as soon as they walk up, so.
The two other houses, the Ray Street and Hawthorne Street, that have the three access points, do we know any history on how those came to be? Were those grandfathered in, or were they before a commission for an approval or variance?
Unfortunately, we don't have that information.
I'll let others go.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes, Rebecca?
I was just curious, you said that when you worked with staff at looking at different options, what some of those different options were and why they didn't, why they wouldn't work?
So the one option was, the one option that came back that we had actually looked at was bringing a drive-in off of Meadows and looping it in front of the house and taking it out to Dryden Road. But in order to do that, we would be removing a tree that's there in the corner, and so we wanted to minimize that as much as possible. We could have taken it back out to Dryden Road because there's no, I don't believe that it would create any issues, because Dryden, the intersection of Dryden and Meadows is our access point, so along Dryden, it would be okay to have multiple access points. But we didn't want to go that route. One, aesthetically, I don't think it would fit the character of the neighborhood, which is another one of the items that we're trying to maintain here. And two, we didn't really want to remove the tree that was in the front yard. That was the reason why we chose not to do. So it would slope in front of the house off of Meadows and then connect back to Dryden Road.
And then there's not enough room, is this what you were saying, on Dryden, to do the whole thing on Dryden, right?
Right.
Okay, it's just not enough space?
Yeah, it's not, the depth is not enough for us to be able to do that along Dryden. It would be a very narrow turn, like, could it be done? Yes, but it'd be very narrow, very tight, and yeah, that was the reason why we didn't.
Okay, and then for the front yard, because, I mean, I know there are a lot of streets right around there that don't have curbs, and they oftentimes put rocks, right? So like if you're on, I think it's Dunston, like where Cheever turns into Dunston, that little road there. Was that something that you guys considered to keep people from parking on your, disrupting your grass and?
We haven't gotten that far as to what we could do to deter, you know, really, the biggest offenders are, I wouldn't say anybody so much from the neighborhood, it's really like the delivery services, FedEx and Amazon and, you know, all these other deliveries. They pull in with bigger trucks, and it just tears up, especially if there's any level of rain. It just tears up the grass, and both us and the neighbors directly across from us deal with sort of the same issue. And I suppose we could, part of this, and I would want to make sure that it would, whatever we do to deter people from doing that, that would look the way that it should look for where we are, right? And so we will pursue other options if we have to, but we figured we'd ask for this first.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Anyone else? I neglected to mention, too, that we did include, for all of our immediate neighbors, that would have to deal with sort of the work going around us. We went and talked with them about our ideas before we came here, and I think there should be a copy of a letter that all of our neighbors had signed in support of the idea. We all are concerned with how congested it gets during the day. It's really weird how busy it is on both sides of the street throughout the day, but everybody was in support of that. So we were happy that it wasn't something that our neighbors, our immediate neighbors, I should say, thought was frivolous or didn't make any sense, so. Okay. Anyone else have any other comments?
I have a question for?
Chair Rebecca?
Chayton or for the?
Staff.
Staff. Just kind of a, I walk around that area a lot, and there are a lot of streets that have no curbs. So I was just kind of curious, like how that, what's the process of, can you get curbs? Do you have to go to the city, or why are there no curbs? Is it just because there are more narrow roads or?
So I don't know why there are not any curbs on Meadows Road, but to get a sidewalk or to get curbs, it'd probably have to be part of like a capital improvement plan with the city, and I don't believe there are any plans for that street, at least to my knowledge, or no plans as of right now to put curb on Meadows Road.
Okay. And then Dryden Road, you said, is not supported by the city? Is that, and so your neighbor who lives past you pays for all the maintenance on that road? Is that?
Dryden Road is a very complicated subject, so we found out more going through this process with it being a private road. So Dave and Teresa Jaeger, who are neighbors that are on Ray Street and Meadows, they live in the ranch there, they have a rental house that's adjacent to them that is on the corner of Dryden and Meadows, so it would be across Dryden Road from where we are.
Right.
Behind them are Vicki and Kirk Thompson. So the way that it works out is, we, if you think of Dryden Road as four parts, the Jaegers are responsible for one-fourth, the Thompsons are responsible for one-fourth, and because our property goes the length of Dryden Road, we are responsible for half, that half. So the maintenance of it, and I believe it was Chayton or someone else on staff that had said it, has to do with the depth of the pavement that the city doesn't come in and plow, so we have to plow anything related to maintenance, so repaving, plowing, anything that we are covering, yes.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
Question for staff. As the code's written, is there any delineation between access points to public versus private roads? And if not, should there be, in your opinion?
Let me pull up the code real quick, and I'll see.
And then where I was going with that is we've got two existing examples on Hawthorne and Ray that have three access points on the same road. This is a request for two access points on the primary road, the road that the address of the house is, and one access point that grandfathered in on a private road, which is essentially a driveway, one could argue, right?
Common driveway between three different properties, right? The Ray Street property is actually between Sunset and Ray, so there's two access points on Ray and one on Sunset.
Okay, thanks for that qualification.
Hawthorne is, Hawthorne is three on, just on Hawthorne.
It's a U, and then there's like a, it's almost like, I had to look to see if that garage or whatever it was was actually part of, I think it's sided similarly, I didn't go and see it, but.
Yeah, it is, it's sided similarly. But there's curbs there and sidewalks, and it's three curb cuts for that particular. That was one of the, we thought, and I'm sorry to interrupt, but to add on to what you said, when we first came in, we thought because it was a private road, it didn't count as, we just found out through the process that that was considered our access point. We thought it being a private road, it didn't, wouldn't count towards. When I saw that the code said it was two access points, I was like, oh, great, here's our two, because that's a private road. But that is not the case, as we found out.
John? So I believe I have an answer. So it says an access point is any driveway or other point of ingress or egress, such as a street, road, or highway that connects to a public roadway. So technically, Dryden Road under this definition would be an access point.
So Dryden Road is the access point, not their driveway?
So.
And I can extrapolate that, and because of the maintenance obligations, one quarter to the Jaegers, one quarter to someone else, and a half to these guys, arguably, they could say they have, they're looking for two and a half access points, because they're only contributing, they're, they take up, they're responsible for half of that access point on the Meadows.
Well, I think Dryden would still count as an access point.
Yeah, it does. It's an access point for technically three properties, right?
Yes, that's true.
Well, two, two effectively, but three are responsible for maintenance.
They're responsible, yes.
The party to the north could act, if they wanted to, could.
They could, yep.
They have the right to do that, and they pay for the maintenance thereof, so.
Yes, sir. Yes, Rebecca, I knew you wanted to say something. Make sure you turn your mic on, please.
Sorry. On Dryden, that's your garage, right?
Right.
And do you use it as a garage for your cars, or do you, is it more of a storage?
So there's three bays, one of them, we have an eight-year-old and a five-year-old, and so we have stuff in one bay, and then the other two, my wife and I have cars in the other two bays, so there are three there. I'm not sure, so we bought the house in 2016, moved in in 2017, but I know that there is quite a bit of, I think when we were going through and looking at prior variation requests, Peter Lappin, who did the, purchased the home originally, I want to say in the 90s, and then did a great deal of work in 2003 to 2005 to rebuild, I think effectively he, it's not considered a tear-down rebuild, he, within code, kept foundation and other things and built up and out in that '05, kind of, maybe it was '04 to '06 in that range. I think there was a lot of requests. He had, this is his word, not what is in the file, but he had requested to have the driveway facing a different direction, but because of the way the private road worked and the offset off of the private road, so even though it is a private road, there's an offset there, and he couldn't get the garage facing the way that he wanted, so he ended up designing the house to have it come in off of Dryden Road. He wanted to have it facing Meadows Road, not facing Dryden Road, but because of setbacks off of the private road that we're responsible for but don't own, they're all very confusing to me, we couldn't, he couldn't put it there, so that's the reason why it's faced the way it is.
Okay.
That was what I was told from the prior owner and the builder, effectively. Well, I don't know, because that's the configuration that you're currently in. Yeah, that's the configuration. Dealing with, and it's, in terms of hardship. Yep. Yep.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, so start with members of the audience. Anyone here wants to provide testimony on this matter? Nope, I guess not. So anyone online? There is no one online, so. We don't have any, any additional public testimony on this one. Yes, Tim?
Mr. Chairman, is it appropriate to make the motion to close public comment at this point?
I think so. If you feel like you've got enough information.
Close public comment.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Second, Mead.
Moved and seconded. Vanessa, please call a roll.
Evans. Holloman.
Holloman, aye.
Mataskill, aye.
Mead, aye.
Moran.
Moran, aye.
Slifka.
Slifka, aye.
Stocking.
Stocking, aye.
Discussion.
Okay, discussion.
Chairman Stocking, I would like to point one thing out.
Oh, absolutely, go ahead.
So I just want to remind the commission, there's four standards, um, and they're broken down by each request. There's two requests under each standard, okay? There's an A and a B. There are three of those standards that are not met, so if we, if the commission decides that they want to amend those, findings of fact in the affirmative, um, we'll just need to amend that and understand.
The reasonable return ones were the ones that I was looking at.
So it would be both access control and lot coverage, uh, under reasonable return, did not meet the standards. And then under number two, the unique hardship, um, the lot coverage states that did not meet standard two. So like I said, if we want to, if, if the commission feels that they want to amend those, so, uh, they can vote in the affirmative, they'll-
Let's all walk through them.
Take the reasonable return, one, which there's two.
I mean, you, you could take the view on reasonable return. Property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the regulations of the district in which it is located. You could, folks are looking for 1258 Meadows. They come to 1258 Meadows, they, there's no driveway. They generally park on this, on the road. They've got a, folks not familiar with the property have to search and go down Dryden to find, I mean, obviously you can, you can look and probably see this. It's not a, it's not a big scavenger hunt, but it's, but it's, it's, it's something that at least by adding this would, um, might make this a more, uh, more attractive property if they were going to sell it more readily. It might sell faster, it might, might appease more people. I just, I, I think that, uh, it, it's additive to the value of the property, I think, to have access from Meadows Road, in my opinion.
Yes, Tim?
Yeah, to dovetail on Commissioner Mead's comment, uh, I live on a street where only four houses on the street have curbs and I'm one of them. So the rest of the street, all the way down to 38, and this is three blocks long, is not curbed. So these folks are constantly, um, creatively trying to keep people off the lawn, putting in the sticks or the big bricks, which if they asked me as a lawyer, I would recommend they not do, but that's not neither here nor for me to say. But I interpret reasonable return not as a demand to increase value, but at a minimum to maintain value. So I don't think it's incumbent on these folks to prove that this is going to increase their value. Uh, I think what they need to do, and in my opinion have done, based on their drawings, based on getting the neighbors to sign off, based on, uh, their homework, the number of other houses with these types of driveways, have shown that, uh, this is a reasonable request whose really only impact will be to allow them to maintain their value, uh, protect their lawn and protect frankly the street, uh, because I do understand what they say about, uh, the cars and heavy traffic. So I, I don't have a problem with A or B under number one, with the reasonable return.
Any other comments on that? Yes, Michael?
Yeah, I would agree with that. I mean, I see this, I see it being additive to the property. And as a result, you know, affecting its, its potential return, so. It's attempting to deal with the issues of the street and the fact that, you know, the street doesn't provide adequate passageway for people to get around it and they can park in the driveway, delivery trucks can park in the driveway, stay off the street. So they have physical conditions of their front yard that are different than typical, I would say, in Geneva.
Okay?
I, I also agree with Commissioner Moran that on item one B, uh, that even though it goes over by three percent of the lot coverage, you know, having the turning radius, having enough driveway that the folks can maneuver it without tearing up their lawn, it seems like a reasonable request and would allow them ready access to, to their, to the reasonable return. Versus it's not increasing the property value, it's just allowing them to, it's going to be more marketable.
To navigate the driveway safely, yep.
Right.
So it wasn't like they're trying to put a park, a parking area or a little parkoff area as part of the actual, it's just the geometry and the access point of the driveway.
Right.
Well, I, I have a question, I guess. So if there's still a functional garage that is being used by the two automobile owners of the home, how many service providers could there be happening at one time where you need to have ability to pass and-
Right.
So I guess that's, I would say, that would be my thought is, you know, as we look at like the minimal variation, is it really necessary to, to be able to, to pass? I mean, how many parties are you having or where, where that's such an issue that it is? I mean, if, if there's a way to stay within the, um, percentage, is it that much of a hardship to just have the one? Just one?
I think you're discussing the standard number four, which is the minimum variation requested. It sounded like you mentioned-
Right, I, yeah, so maybe I'm-
Forgot to get to that one.
Jumping, yeah.
Any other comments? Yes, Adam?
Uh, I definitely am in agreement. I am familiar with the area. My in-laws live on Hawthorne. I know that, uh, it's pretty common to have that half, half circle drive in that area. Uh, when I went to drive by, it was probably late morning and wanted to kind of just cruise by slowly and, and take a look. But unfortunately it was so crowded that I had to pull off because there was a lawn service truck and there was people walking, a dog and another car coming at me. So I had to pull off. I didn't go on your grass. I pulled off on Dryden and had to pull off to be able to look. But I, I definitely, having two young daughters of my own, can see there's a lot of blind spots if people are walking, if kids are trying to get around the neighborhood. It's, it's a safety concern and I think it's, you know, it's, it's, it's kind of you to sacrifice a lot of your green space to actually, you know, not only protect your lawn, but I think it, it's for the safety of the, the neighborhood, so.
Okay, I think we covered-
Sounds like the commission is in agreement that one A and one B are met based on the rationale discussed.
So then we can move on to standard two.
Standard, yeah.
So that's really two B, right?
Correct.
Chayton, question for you. Any back and forth regarding it goes from 12 feet to 15 feet or keeping it at 12 feet? What does, what would, what would, if it was kept at 12 feet throughout the, the circle, would that put us in compliance? Would it, would, would that create other difficulties?
I don't think trimming it down, um, to 12 feet all the way across would, uh, bring it into compliance. But I think as the applicant's mentioned in, in the staff report, they, they need that extra width to make the turns for the vehicles. But eliminating, um, that and making it more narrow, I don't think it would, uh, bring the driveway into compliance.
You do have, whether it's a FedEx truck or whatever, will take a wider turn than a, a Miata.
They don't park in driveways anyway. They just don't.
Rarely.
Amazon and FedEx, they don't, I mean, neither here nor there, but I'm just saying like they don't park in driveways.
Typically don't, right. I know FedEx won't.
Yeah.
Yes, Michael?
So Chayton, this, uh, two B, so this related though, this statement to the design that is presented, not other alternative designs. For example, that they mentioned, they looked at some designs that came in off of Dryden, which to me looked like they would take up more coverage. Uh, so that is just a clarification on what this statement relates to.
Specifically for two B. So this just deals with, uh, the actual lot coverage, um, uh, related to the unique hardship or practical difficulty. And can you, can you elaborate one more time? I'm sorry.
Yeah, so it, when it talks about alternative designs, could eliminate the need for a, a variation. So, but what, what alternative designs are those, I guess is what I'm asking?
So it was an alternative design that actually we just touched on. It, it would have narrowed the driveway down, I believe. And, but the issue is that it doesn't provide the turn radius, like that, that narrow width doesn't allow the vehicles really to keep on the driveway where the tire could fall, it could veer off and damage the lawn.
So it's an alternative design of, of the same configuration essentially though?
Essentially, yes.
It's just an adjustment to that configuration?
At least from what staff's seen.
Okay, that was my question, thanks.
Yeah. And I think the applicant provided some additional testimony, saying they tried other geometries and it just didn't pan out in terms of other negative effects in the driveway design, so. Yes, Tim?
Again, I, I, I think, uh, what the applicant has presented in terms of reasoning and in terms of diagram persuades me, uh, to favor this. True, Amazon doesn't pull into your driveway, but plumbers do and milkmen do and your nephew with the four-door F-150 does. And they simply would not be able to make that cut on a 12-foot driveway. It's just not going to happen. So all the Hiltons would do is move their grass problem from one end of the lawn to the other. So I, I, I think it is a unique, uh, issue and I'm persuaded that they have overcome it with this application.
So Commissioner Moran, can you elaborate on the, I guess, the, the practical difficulty, like the shape or topography, the other conditions? Focus on maybe that part of revising the, the finding of facts, if, if you could.
Well, again, my, my comments go to practicality and the geometry of what I'll call a semicircle, which is that you can get the trucks in, but getting them out becomes more problematic when you try and make that turn. And that's true, it's a bigger problem with bigger trucks. And it doesn't have to be a bigger truck. You can't drive around Geneva anymore without seeing extra-long pickup trucks. And my suspicion is they would not make this cut at a 12-foot drive. They're going to need the additional area that is provided with that short, short 15-foot span. So I think that does present the hardship and brings into the reasoning, the rea-, uh, the request for the variation on this issue.
John?
To, to put it another, another way, the, um, the geometry of the front lawn and the proximity of the house to the street does not allow a U-shaped driveway to be designed in any other way that would allow both for, uh, turning radius of vehicles on pavement, without, without exceeding the, the 35% maximum lot coverage. So I think, you know, the geometry, they're stuck with the geometry. They can't move the house. This is not a new greenfield design, so they, they cannot change this. Only, they're, they're locked into the geometry of the front yard and I think they've done everything they could to make that work.
The turning is such that they have to have that extra space.
Yep.
Does that, does that help, Jane?
Yes.
Any other comments or questions on that? Okay, I think we've met that one.
Do we need to articulate these in a motion or are we going to just say as discussed?
I think as, I would say amended, subject to amended findings of fact.
Amended findings of fact, as discussed during the meeting. Someone will transcribe those at a, for the city council. So those were the three, right?
Correct.
Unless there's any other discussion, I, I'm prepared to make a motion.
I don't know. Is there any other discussion, anything that we've missed that commissioners would like to add? Does not appear to be.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for the property at 1258 Meadows Road to allow a variation, variation from section 11 dash 11C dash three access control standards for streets to allow more than two driveway entrances, subject to the amended findings of fact contained in the staff report and as discussed this evening.
Moran, second. Moved and seconded. Vanessa, call a roll, please.
Evans. Holloman.
Holloman, aye.
Mataskill.
Mataskill, aye.
Mead.
Mead, aye.
Moran.
Moran, aye.
Slifka.
Slifka, aye.
Stocking.
Stocking, aye.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for a variation from section 11 dash four, five B dash four, real estate, estate, single-family residential district lot and area requirements to increase the allowable lot coverage from 35% to 35.13% at the residence, commonly known as 1258 Meadows Road, subject to the findings of fact contained in the staff report and as further amended at tonight's public, uh, public hearing discussion.
I would just point out, John, you said 35.13%, I think you had 38.
Thirty-eight, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, thank you.
With that amendment, I'll second the motion.
Moved and seconded. Vanessa, call a roll, please.
Evans, Holloman.
Holloman, aye.
Mataskill.
Mataskill, aye.
Mead.
Mead, aye.
Moran.
Moran, aye.
Slifka.
Slifka, aye.
Stocking.
Stocking, aye. Okay. Very good.
So, uh, both recommendations will be considered by the city council on Monday, August 15th. Uh, it'll be right here in the city council chambers at 7:00 PM.
All right. Thank you very much for your presentation. Appreciate it. Yep. Okay, and next item on the agenda is public comment. So anybody in the public audience wants to comment, this is your opportunity. And anyone online? There isn't anyone online. So no additional public comment directed to the commission. Other business?
Yes, we have a couple items. So do want to introduce a new face this evening, Vanessa Quill. She'll be, um, taking our minutes from now on. So just wanted to introduce her. We're happy to have her. So anything you want to add? I don't-
Thank you, thank you very much.
Yeah. Excellent. Excellent.
We need the help. Or at least I do.
Also, I do want to mention that, um, there is a commission, council, um, and staff appreciation event at a King County Cougars game coming up, um, August 18th. I'm not familiar with the time. I think it'll be probably in the evening, six o'clock or seven. But as much as that's August 18th, if you would like to RSVP, just reach out. I think I sent the flyer and the email to everyone. I think I sent the flyer and the email to everybody, so just follow the directions on that, reach out to staff, and we can get you set up. It will be, I think it's an additional $10 for each friend or family member that you do bring to the game. And that does include all the dollars that you can spend at the event. And you can also figure out parking through city staff. They'll help you get some parking passes for the event.
Cool.
Okay, very good.
Yep.
And then we'll go over just a couple of upcoming projects, I guess. Our next meeting will be August 11th. We will have the Fox Valley Commerce Center bringing in their final approvals for their final PUD, final subdivision, and site plan review. That does not require a public hearing, but that will be on August 11th. And then we'll also have a concept review from a business that would like to locate on East State Street, kind of across from where the Route 38 Logistics Center is being constructed right now. Pretty close to the very edge, the very eastern edge of Geneva. But they're interested in eventually building a truck repair facility there. So they are interested in coming before the planning and zoning commission for a concept review.
South side of 38.
On the south side, correct.
All the trucks that are coming in and out of all the warehousing.
Right.
Okay?
Well, this is for a business, I think, that's located outside of the community, but they felt that this would be a good location for them.
Oh, it's in the county?
I'm not, I'm not 100% sure.
Okay.
Didn't we have a truck repair facility that was over?
Yeah, USA Transport, I believe.
Right.
It's by Old Kirk, right?
Is that operational?
They, I don't believe they've started construction yet.
Okay.
So they're still going through final engineering.
That's not far from there at all, either.
No.
No.
Also, we sent a couple of recommendations to city council regarding the Verizon Tower at Oscar Swan, and that will be considered at the August 8th, Monday, August 8th, city council meeting. That will be a special city council meeting, with I believe that's just the only item on the agenda because there was a lot of public interest in that recommendation and that project.
I saw a crane at a tower at Delnor. Is that a new tower, or is that a maintained existing tower?
When you say tower, communication tower?
Yeah.
Well, I know they're doing construction on the cancer center, so I don't, I'm not familiar with, have something to do with that.
Yeah, it was more towards the hospital site.
Okay. Yeah, because I know they, Delnor came through planning and zoning, I believe, in February for the expansion of the cancer center and an amendment to their PUD, and so now they're finally starting that work.
I'm not sure. I just saw, I just saw, I was out there, I think it was a couple of days ago, I was driving by, and I looked over, and there was a big crane over there. So I don't know if it's a new one or not.
Okay, well, we can look into that.
Just FYI.
Get it back to you, yeah.
It was right, it was closer to the hospital. It was definitely not the cancer center. It was more where the hospital was located.
And then for our August 25th planning and zoning commission meeting, as of right now, we're expected to have two public hearings. One will be for the Connaught Dentistry variation. They are interested in building a dentist office between, I believe, I'm trying to pull it up right now, and the internet is very slow. It's on the south side of East State Street between Harrison Street and Sandholm Street. It doesn't have an address right now, but it's an empty lot. They would like to build their dentist office there. They need a variation for their street yard setback because of the East State Street widening project.
Is that a city-owned lot?
I don't believe so.
Because I remember seeing a sign for, I thought it was a city property.
Is it adjacent to a realtor?
I know the site. I know where he's talking about. I swear, and I saw a city billboard on that for sale.
I think it's close to across the street from Dairy Queen.
Oh, it's across the street? It's on the other side of the street?
Yeah, it's on the south side of State Street.
Oh, okay. I thought it was on their site.
It's pretty congested in their side, across.
Right next to the Jeep place? We had that one proposal where the guy wanted to put an office in there, remember that? Right next door to the Jeep.
I believe it is next to the Jeep dealership.
Oh, that's the same site. So we had a guy that came in there for an office proposal. That was years ago. That was a while ago.
So, yeah, as I mentioned, they're requesting a variation to their street yard setback. And then we're expected to also bring an amendment, a text amendment for fence heights to the planning and zoning commission to make a recommendation to city council. And this mainly deals with allowing 48-inch fences in the side yard of some properties with pools. Because right now, the maximum height in the street yard, in the, in the street yard for properties on corner lots is 42 inches. But if you have a pool in the backyard, the pool and spa code requires a fence of 48 inches. So we've had a lot of variations come to the planning and zoning commission, just to the city, regarding increasing that height so that they could not only have a fence to close in their backyard, but also have a fence that counts, that meets that requirement for the spa and pool code.
Yeah, sure.
So we're trying to work on some language right now and hopefully have that to you at the August 25th.
You're trying to balance sightlines for drivers on a corner lot and safety for pools.
Yes.
You might have to get into types of fencing and how open they are so that you don't disturb the sightlines or something.
Yeah. I know there's a sight triangle, and that needs to remain, I think it's at or below three feet, so.
Yeah. I have a question.
Yes.
I don't know if it was discussed at the last meeting, I wasn't here. The even flow sign? Was there any? It's still up?
I believe it was taken down today.
I saw, I saw it coming home last night.
You're right, I've noticed it.
It looked like it was down last night.
Yes, yeah.
It was down last night?
Well, we were coming home from our son's at about 9:30 last night, and I said, I think it's down.
Oh, okay.
One day I saw it.
Yeah, I got a notification today that it was removed.
Okay.
Okay.
That is all that I have.
Okay.
Other business?
Wow.
We need to move.
Yeah.
Move to adjourn?
Thank you, John.